Is that a, is that a hospitality gene hosted by someone or we're just going there?
Okay.
It is being hosted by them.
Okay.
Welcome everyone. It is seven forty on Tuesday, November nineteenth. Welcome to the Warren Township High School District, one twenty-one, Regular Board of Education Meeting. As we start every meeting, let's stand up and receive the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to tonight's agenda? If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Shul, second by Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Shul.
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Next up are recognitions.
Elena, do you want to come up, Elena? Do you want to come up? Okay, I'm, I think I'll do this right.
She says, come up where?
Right there's good.
Just keep walking around.
Right there's good, right there. Can you just really quickly introduce yourself to everybody and then I have a little blurb that I'm gonna read about you.
Uh, I'm Elena McCormick. I'm a senior and I dive for Warren's swim dive team.
Great. So, and Elena was busy diving this last week. Elena is, here's what we wrote about her in scratch paper. Elena is a very talented and dedicated athlete. She makes the most of every practice and puts in the work to make sure she is ready for every competition. During competitions, she displays a genuine love of the sport as well as incredible talent. We often hear from other coaches and officials that they love watching her compete because she truly loves the sport and has fun while performing at a very high level. At the state meet this past weekend, she performed at her best and consistently scored well on all eleven dives, which is what propelled her to a tenth place finish overall. In a sport where sixteen sectional winners advance along with the next twenty-four athletes, Elena proved that she is truly one of the most talented divers in the state of Illinois. In our sectional meet, she finished fifth. Three of the athletes who finished higher in that meet made it to the state finals and only one finished higher in finals. She loves the sport and she performs at her best when she is relaxed and having fun like she did this weekend. So, we're really proud of her and her representation.
Yeah. Nice job. That's wonderful.
Parents are here too, so we're grateful that they came out to visit and so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support. That's.
And you know you have to stay for the rest of the whole meeting, right? No.
Run for it.
Run while you can.
And then we did have our signing day, so I'm just gonna jump through these slides here. This is the last year that they're doing letter of intent signing days because some of the scholarship rules for college athletes change next year. So, a little bit of a celebration that this is the last couple of times that we'll do this. So, we have Colton Holmes, who'll be playing baseball. Supriya Davenport, who'll be playing lacrosse. Danny Bernal Polito, who'll be playing soccer. McGarley, who will be playing soccer. Addison Stanciak, who'll be playing soccer. Katie Monroe, who'll be playing softball. Um, I think that's it actually. So, we're really great. Good job, everyone. That's all we have for recognitions.
Okay. Lena, as you might have heard, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Our feelings will not be hurt at all if you get up and leave.
I was just messing with you.
We're very used to that. Next up on the agenda is the time for a public comment. I don't believe anybody has signed in. Anybody like to address the board? They're more than welcome to right now. The podium is yours. It's twice. Okay. Next up are our committee reports.
Do we have anything here to add?
Questions on the committee reports that were sent out? If not, we'll go right into the superintendent's report.
All right, at the beginning of the superintendent's report, I forgot to mention that we did have Board of Education Members Day, which was on November fifteenth. So, we're grateful to our board members for their service to the community. I do have some reports in the superintendent reports section, but mostly I, we have a couple, a few visitors here today that we're gonna ask to come up and talk with us about some things that we've been involved with with our strategic plan over the last couple of months. And so, I think first we've got a group that went down to Chattanooga. If you guys could come up and they're gonna tell us about a visit that we had a handful of staff members participate in to Tennessee last month. I think you got a clicker there. Just make sure the mic turns green.
Awesome. Good evening. My name is Ashley Easterwood and I'm a dean here at the Almond campus.
Michelle Fisetti, I teach history here at the Almond campus.
And I'm Kim Pash. I teach English here at the Almond campus as well.
And we took it a little venture to Chattanooga where we got to visit and explore a big picture school, University High School. So, I'll talk a little bit about the school and then the other ladies will dive more into our experience there. Okay? So, University High, High School was launched in two thousand twenty-three. It is actually on the campus of University of Tennessee at Chattanooga. And the juniors and senior students there are from various school districts throughout Hamilton County schools, not all from one high school. They do need to apply for the program and go through an application process. When we visited, we got to see the school, we got to see the classrooms. We met with the big picture staff that flew in to visit with us and then we also got to meet with all of the university high staff, including the teachers and the principal. Um, and then we attended a community mixer and participated in Focus Friday activities prior to departure. So, a little bit more about the application process for students. So, any current sophomore is eligible to apply, but they need to have a three point oh or higher GPA and they are within the Hamilton County school districts. They also need to have two recommendation letters. And prior to being accepted to the program, they go to an interview process to make sure they're also a good fit for the program.
So, I guess there's no freshmen or sophomores, just a two-year.
Correct, at, at this school.
At this one, yeah.
But there are plenty of other big picture schools where there are nine through twelve.
Okay.
It's, it's considered a public school.
Correct.
I just didn't want to miss that. Okay.
Yep, yep. And then I'll share the mission statement of University High School. Our mission is to develop an extraordinary university partnered high school education model in order to change lives through building community, making connections and developing career interests while cultivating creative and resilient students who master rigorous content. Take ownership and initiative, embody cultural aware communication, and illustrate a solutions oriented mindset.
Uh, so one of the tenants of their program is to get the kids out with the community. They have very rigorous partnerships, internships. They do not call these field trips. They are Focus Fridays. And the principal is in the bottom, in the middle there. She made that very clear the first day that we call her that. And she has a really dynamic relationship with the students. So, this is one of the outings that they took. And then there's Mrs. Pash. She went to the cadaver lab. We had a choice on Friday. We were able to participate. We went, we went to the school. She, she took on the, um, the interesting one, I guess we should say there, but.
I would've gone with you. Don't worry.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm thank you for taking that for the team. There was seven of us total, by the way, so we divided up, but we're the ones who came in tonight. Um, and these were just some of our takeaways from attending. We really loved the community feel that the school evoked. When we went to the mixer, we, we talked really deeply with the students and these were students that were struggling. These were students who had come from places where they didn't think they would see success in their future. And this was like really inspirational to speak with them. They were encouraged. We kind of caught on to it. They had to, they were told for the mixer that we attended that evening. I think they had to talk to five adults or was it three? Three to five adults and they were shaking our hands and introducing and finally I'm like, okay, what, what's going on here? But they were really enthusiastic. Just if nothing else, the way they commanded the room was a life skill that you can't measure. But the one thing, and, and Kim will speak more to this, that really impressed us was this concept of an advisory. And we really all kind of shook our heads and sort of felt like this is something that maybe we would like to explore further, especially potentially if we were to get there with Warren at the freshman level and to build these bonds and these communities. Cause they, they do have four-year schools, as Ashley was saying as well. This was kind of a unique situation for us to see.
Okay, so yes, advisory was one of the big pillars, if not probably the biggest pillar of their schools. They talked a lot about the importance of advisory and some of the things that they said about how an advisory should be structured. We know that, we knew going in that we had talked about advisory at Warren. I don't know, maybe around ten years ago and ended up not going forward with it. I think partly COVID kind of interrupted that. So, it was, that, this was something that we asked a lot of questions about and this was the feedback they gave, that advisory, that the optimal class size is fifteen to really kind of build a sense of community, that advisory is not, it's not a homeroom. They said that over and over. It's, it's a class. It's a credit bearing class where they are getting projects, getting assigned projects, doing presentations, really exploring their interests. They stressed that teachers who are assigned an advisory as part of their class load should be enthusiastic about the role they would play, that not everyone has to have an advisory. They said that's where a lot of schools go wrong, is that every single teacher is assigned an advisory and that it's more of a, a specific passion project for teachers and that it doesn't have to be that every single person does advisory. The leave to learns, as they call them, are the Focus Fridays. They don't like the term field trip. They feel like that makes it seem like it's just for fun and not an educational necessity. That those leave to learns and real world experiences are key and they come from advisory. The, the students are exploring their career interests and saying things like, hey, I want to go into medicine. And so, okay, let's, let's visit the cadaver lab. Let's visit the hospital. Let's visit with a, a parent who maybe is a nurse. Let's bring them in. So, they're constantly sort of reevaluating the curriculum and making sure that it's geared towards these students' interests and their career goals. That was huge for them, honoring students' interests. They said things like, it's the student's right to study things they're interested in, that we are taking away their rights when we are forcing them to do things that they're not interested in, which was a little jarring for us at a public school in Illinois where we know they have all sorts of requirements. But that was very eye opening. Student exhibitions and presentations are key. When we visited advisory, we, we got to visit advisory twice. On the first day, we did fifteen minute shifts and we saw four different advisories and the students were presenting. It was, they blew us away. I mean, and again, these are students who are coming from impoverished families, impoverished districts, places where there are not a lot of opportunities. And they were able to speak in front of a group. The students gave feedback that was meaningful and genuine. There was really a sense of community in those rooms, so it was very, very inspiring to see. And they kept, when I, I was, I asked a lot of questions when we were there. So, they were like, we, we, like, you need to hire us to make us actually answer those questions. No, not exactly that, but they did keep saying, you know, we can help develop the curriculum at your school. Like, that's something that we do. You know, we can't answer every question for how this would look at Warren Township High School, but we can tell you these tenants and then we can help you to develop, you know, what that might look like in your school. So, with that in mind, you know, we kind of have been brainstorming some potential next steps and Michelle and I are on the graduation committee. Ashley's on the strategic plan committee, is that what that's called? And we've kind of both, those committees have been sort of overlapping with some of the discussions about how, you know, what, what the next steps might be in, in investigating what some of these things might look like. We definitely think that we need to conduct more site visits. One of the things, and I know you asked about the just junior seniors, there are nine through twelve schools. We really think that we need to investigate a school that is a nine through twelve campus. That particular school that we visited was on a university campus. That allowed them for some opportunities that we would have to arrange in a different way here. So, we asked for a few names of schools that mirrored Warren a little bit better and the two that they gave us in the upcoming dates for those visits are Fannie Loue School in the Bronx, New York, and a school in San Diego that, the visit's in April. So, we're hoping that more stakeholders can be sent to, to check out these schools. We had only Noemi Zapata from Oak Plains. We didn't have any Oak Plain teachers and we didn't have any board members, you guys.
I'll go to San Diego.
Yes, so if those places look good to you, we would love, we would love for, for more people to experience that. And just to see, see some of the things that they're, that they're doing. Yeah, no, we, we would, yeah, we would totally go to the Bronx. Yes. So, just to consider how, you know, how this, how we would structure course sequencing to allow for at least a freshman advisory or some of these tenants to come again. He, he kept saying, you know, you can't do the same thing at every school, right? It has to look a little bit different and that you could work with big picture to help design that advisory program and curriculum. So, we're hoping it's something that the board would like to look into more. With us, we're willing to continue to investigate as well. We can be your tour guides and introduce you to San. He's amazing. But yeah, we hope that it's something that we continue to investigate and eventually move forward with some of those tenants.
So, to ground us before you ask any questions, one of the six big goals of our strategic plan is we will rethink the high school experience to provide stronger career connections and modernize the role of students in their learning process. So, what we're doing with these visits is trying to get our staff members out to different places in the country where they have models that just make us rethink the types of experiences students have on a day-to-day basis when they come to school. And we're, I'm really appreciative that these, these people are willing to take a couple of days out of their schedule, go down and visit, help us learn. And it seems like something they think we should keep learning more about. What questions do you have for them?
Go ahead.
Say something. No, I just want to say I appreciate your time on this. Anything we can do to learn how we can do things differently than we're currently doing, I think we're all in favor of. I came from a high school that had a homeroom advisory kind of mix. I thought it was a great experience. I mean, we always need to push ourselves right now to, what can we do differently to help improve our students' education and their high school experience? So, what you guys are learning and bringing back to us is greatly appreciated.
I appreciate the out-of-state travel. We many times get tunnel vision into what our neighbors are doing, Lake County's doing. This area is doing, Illinois is doing, and we tend to forget that there's different models all over the country. So, I appreciate just looking elsewhere and taking the time to go look elsewhere. When I think about, like, a lot of it focused on advisory. Taking a step back, what is advisory? And maybe if we don't get everything we want with advisory, I think conceptually, what it is, is probably what matters the most, which is some type of non-academic, social, emotional, learning lessons, connections, relationships. The piece that, I mean, that's what I'm drawing from this, the principal. The time that a small core group of students with adult are building a support system. That's what I'm hearing when I hear advisory, cause we can stick an advisory in and have it be study skills, which it may include that, or it could be other things. But from what I'm hearing, it's focusing on the relationships and those social connections that maybe are needed, particularly in a high school that's our size. So, as you go around, I don't know if you're gonna keep traveling or other people are, but that seems to be a common thread as various topics have come up in how to rethink high school relationships, 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 and who's developing those and who's checking in on kids and how are kids developing them with other kids and where do social, where do SEL lessons get taught? Well, if there's not a structure, like, so anyway, that's what I'm zeroing in on and hearing. So, if you can just keep your senses up as you go and travel and see how that plays out in the other schools too. Cause when you have good relationships with kids, learning happens. Supports happen, that kind of thing.
Oh, so I'm a visual person. Thanks for those words, Tony, cause I appreciate you saying all that. I'm a visual person. So, well, how does it look like, like in a schedule? Is it, it's a class they take every day and then every Friday they're gone, every. And then every Friday they're gone, every once a month they're gone? And, and how do they choose, like, where they're going and based on, because you got like, what, 15 kids with 15 different interests? Like, I'm just curi-, I, I, I just kind of want to understand it better, I guess.
And I are similar, these are the types of questions I, I was asking, like, how does the schedule look? I kept asking things like that.
Plan it today.
No, but just, yeah, we, and I have some pictures I can show you on my phone that we didn't put in the slideshow of different schedules, different um student schedules. But they did meet with advisory every day, um, but focus Fridays were not every single Friday, but they were, did they say twice a month? I think twice a month, but again, it depended somewhat on what they could, what they could get, you know, get put on the schedule. Is the cadaver lab available this week? No? Okay, well then we'll do that next week. There were always at least two choices and as an entire school, they chose one. So you didn't have to necessarily go, that, not everyone was going to the same place.
As an entire school.
Correct.
You have an option. I got you.
Yes, so there were some choices on that Friday.
Okay, that makes sense.
How many kids were in the school?
Like 87, so that was one of my big things. I kept going, okay, what does this look like at a bigger, yes. What does this look like at a bigger school? Like, she kept mentioning, the principal kept mentioning all these students by name and we're like, finally, we're like, how many students go here? She was like 87, we're like, okay, we need to see a bigger school, what this looks like in a bigger school, because that's obviously not real big for us. Yes, yes.
It's a test tube, basically, right? You're seeing, it's working in a small, then how do you?
And this is only for freshman students?
No.
Juniors and seniors.
Oh, sorry.
Juniors and seniors only, in that school.
And they were only in their second year, so they were admittedly, like, were still working out kinks on things. Like, the first year advisory was not for credit. And they real quickly realized that has to be a credit to build those relationships, but accountability, because kids were skipping it. Like, oh, I don't have to go, because it's just advisory. So to place value behind it, that was real important, and they changed that to, this year, I guess, would be the first.
Maybe you said this and I probably missed it, but is it mandatory for every child enrolled in that school? It is, it's mandatory, right? It's not an elective, it's a.
It's a mandatory, like, they actually, it is the only elective. So one of the things, um, that they talked about was giving students like a smattering of career interests, rather than having to make them choose, especially at a young age. Like, I'm just going to do digital photography or I'm just going to do, I don't know what.
So it's like anti-career path, because it's like everything.
It was very career path, but it was.
You know what I mean, like?
It was explore all these.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Don't pigeonhole into one, you'll see everything.
And then they still were able to, because it was so student-centered and they did so many presentations and exhibitions and things like that. They were still able to focus on the things they wanted to do. So like, one student did a whole um presentation on, on blood pressure and um, uh, I don't know. And impacts on, impacts on the black community, so that was her project. So she was still able to pigeonhole in that way to say, this is my career interest, but she still throughout the year had to look at all those different career clusters.
It is, uh, when we're doing visioning work around school redesign, we, in most cases, will spend a lot of time looking at small schools and small sites because small schools are less likely to have had to make concessions in their design work. And so when you expand out then to a large school, you have to have more conversations around concessions and we eventually would get to that point. But when we're doing the visioning work and the learning work, like, they're involved and we want to find places that are less, that, that didn't have to make as many of those concessions. So we can, yeah, less corrupted, yeah, yeah.
Corrupted so negative.
Yeah, I know, but that's me.
Is this something that has been done in Illinois and I missed it, or could it be done, or are there barriers? Could we do this if we wanted to do this?
Yeah, we could. So what they're participating, what they're doing is they're visiting a school that's part of a school improvement network. And Big Picture Learning is uh the network that facilitates um school redesign based on a really specific set of values and tenets. One of the tenants is an advisory program. They have, I think it's 11 core values that they work off of. And so we're kind of shopping around in some of our design work right now to find a set of schools that maybe have some values that work with us. And so it seems like this is a possibility, so we're going to go look at some other schools within that same big picture learning network. And if we can consistently say, yeah, when we go to all these schools, they feel like a school that we could see ourselves being like, looking like, sounding like, smelling like, feeling like, let's, it won't be exactly like that, but we could, we could see ourselves doing it. Let's bring big picture learning in and help us figure out what could this look like, sound like, feel like at Warren.
Don't let this drop. Keep bugging us.
We're on it. Yeah, we were, it was, it was, it was incredibly inspirational. Yeah, they picked, they picked the right people if you'd like us to keep bothering you.
Sometimes it takes a while, you gotta keep.
We will do that.
Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll go the Bronx, by the way.
All right, then we're going to ask uh Matt and Peter, who are our assistant principals, uh, to spend some time. They're going to talk about two topics with us that are also part of our plan on a page this year. Uh, one of those is our uh intervention courses, our lunchtime supports that are new this year. And then one of them is our distributed professional development model.
Good evening, my name is Peter Kupfer.
And I'm Matthew Jones.
And we are your assistant principals for instructional services at the Oak Plain and Almond campuses. And today we're talking about two very exciting topics. Uh, the first is our lunch support courses. And so about uh five years ago in 2020, uh, we started off this project uh by adding in algebra support classes during lunch periods. Uh, it's kind of a, not really planning that far into the future, just knowing at that moment our kids needed help in algebra. And so we started there and kind of worked through the math department. And then now this year, we started, we have now put in these lunch support courses in all four of our core uh departments uh this year. And so the way the process works essentially is students get identified by uh their lead teachers and their department members using uh grade data, our universal screeners that students take, uh, and teacher recommendation. Once uh the, each individual lead teacher in the department kind of identifies their roster of kids they want. The four lead teachers in the building get together and have a draft of sorts. And each pick the children they want in their department's uh intervention, because kids can really only be in one, because they only have one lunch study hall. Uh, and then we work with the counselors, make the schedule changes, we track those intervention plans in Panorama. And then um, yeah, that work gets done. This year, we also uh gave our lead teachers a period in the day um to do this work. It's actually quite a bit of work to manage and track all of this data during the year. And so students in lieu then of going to their study hall during lunch, they go to a classroom where there's a teacher in that department that um helps them in that subject. And so it looks a little different depending on the department and the campus. Uh, some of the departments do it more on a course-based model, like, all of the children need help in algebra, like, that's the only kids they will draw from. So at Oak Plain, that's pretty much how they all are, because our kids, their lunch study halls are done by AB periods, right? So all the freshmen go at once, all the sophomores go at once. So they're pretty much all done by course at Almond. Uh, some of the departments are doing it by course, like, history only does US history uh students. But science just does any science kid that needs help and they try to get all those different electives covered uh during that period. Um, and during those time, the teachers have to provide, uh, they provide some sort of planned instruction during it, but a lot of it is just them helping kids with whatever they're struggling with. And also sometimes if a kid's finished all of their work for that subject, they just kind of make sure they're doing something they should be doing in order to get their grades up uh in general. Um, and so the results this year, having now gone to the uh support courses in all four of the departments. Uh, currently, as of this morning, there were 267 uh students in a support class uh somewhere in the district. Uh, the, so that's like 7% of the children. Uh, and so data for this is kind of tough to navigate, because we're taking kids that are failing and putting them into this program. So most of the kids in there, to be honest, are, are still failing, because they're, they're having trouble, right? So we're trying to bring them up, maybe they've gone from a 30% to a 50%, right? But that's harder to, to track, and then once a kid's not failing, we pull them out and put them back in normal and bring in a different kid that was failing, right? So the kids in that program, their grades are always pretty low. So the data in that sense doesn't look great. But some things we tried to do here um is looking at the kids that have exited so far this year. So every six weeks, right, we take kids out and put new kids in. And so of the kids we've exited from the support classes this year, 76% of them had then gone on to be passing the class that they were getting support in. Um, and then uh the kids in support right now have a 54% passing rate, which is okay. But like I said, that's, that's number isn't always easy to kind of pinpoint. Um, another cool thing we polled this week was looking at year over year. So if you look at this week last year and this week this year. Um, last year at this time, uh, in our district, in the four core departments, we had an 8.74% failure rate. And right now, we have an 8.28% failure rate in those same four uh departments. So there's about 60 more kids passing classes in the core uh subjects than there were at this time last year. Uh, so can I say that's all because of support? No, but I'm going to assume that it is.
I'll take the credit, you're going to get the blame.
There you go, there you go.
Could I ask a quick question? Could you go back?
Uh huh.
Real quick, okay, the students in support have a 54% passing rate. Students in support went in with a failing grade.
For the most part, somebody had a, a, a low D uh as well, so do you have a D or an F?
They're passing.
A, a 60%, a D.
60%.
Yep.
So is it, I guess I, you were saying it was difficult to measure, but is there any way to just take even the kids that were failing and those that transferred into the passing range to measure those?
Uh, probably, I mean, I shouldn't say it's difficult to measure, it can be misleading at times.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I was just, I was curious, when you said 54, if they all went in with an F and now half of them are passing.
Yeah, so that's awesome, right?
In my head, right? But they didn't all go in with an F.
Yes, some, some, some had a D, right? Because that, because there was like 7% of our kids are in support, but not, but we only have about probably 5% that are failing overall. Um, I think roughly, depending on the week, so uh some start to go in with like low Ds instead and trying to keep them stabilized to finish out the semester. And so then just kind of the cost of support, right? There's no physical, like, money being exchanged or anything. But we did start this in math by just reallocating FTE, right? We made some changes in our programming, so we could do that initially as kind of a staff neutral move. And we've been fortunate, I guess, kind of, as our enrollment has been going down, we've been able to reallocate more staff. And so right now, there's approximately 36 different staff members that are teaching a section of support across the different departments. And that kind of adds up overall, there's 8.4 FTEs uh being used to run these support courses. And then the lead teachers at each campus in the four core departments are each given one assignment of their day to manage and support this. So overall, about 10 uh FTEs are being used to run these support courses. And so now I'll turn over to Matt.
Excellent, I'm excited to talk about professional development today. So first thing we want to talk about professional development, what were our goals this year? We decided to change things this year and make things um new for our professional development plan. Uh, we, we started with some staff involvement, we've been soliciting feedback from staff after each of our professional development opportunities. Um, just getting feedback from them and taking in um the feedback and making changes accordingly. Uh, we also wanted to make work that was cohesive, we wanted this not to be a one-off thing. We didn't want this to be something we just did one year and then never did again. So we wanted this to be something we do year over year and something that's relevant throughout the year also. Uh, we also wanted to be something teachers could use right away. Teachers gave us feedback that they wanted stuff they could use in their classrooms. Um, so we made sure our professional development this year um involved things that they could use in their classrooms right away. Uh, we took a tiered approach, we have three tiers of our professional development. First of all, we have our district, that's our big stuff. Then below that, we have our building, and then below that, we have our departmental professional development. So each of those three, we're going to explore next. So district professional development, this year we made a change, we shifted our mandated topic training to online. So that gave us more freedom to use that time for professional development. We also had three in-stude days that are planned by our in-service committee. The first one was in October, we planned it around differentiated instruction. Then in January, we'd, we'd be doing English language learners. And in March, we'd be doing Danielson Domains 2 and 3. So those are three professional developments for the district. Next, we had our building professional development, this was four late starts for the year, so this is done in the mornings on Wednesdays. Um, we differentiate instructions with whole building presentations, so we've been working with instructional coaches. So Peter and I worked with instructional coaches to present um on differentiated instruction during those four late starts. Um, we've also been doing dress rehearsals with lead teachers. Before we present to the whole staff, we've been doing a dress rehearsal with our lead teachers where we present to them and get feedback from them to make changes to the program. And they've been very helpful, we've made a lot of changes based upon those, uh, the feedback we were given. The last thing we had was departmental professional development. This year, we empower our lead teachers to lead department, departmental professional development in areas they thought were most meaningful to their department. Um, they've done things that PD from internal and external experts. They've also done some ACT prep, as that's the new test coming this year. And they've also done departmental Danielson training as we move towards the Danielson model next year.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate our guys' help on this. Yeah. This is great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So these were topics, uh, all three of these were topics that we would have done uh probably during committee of the whole, but we just kind of pushed them here, so. Also, the, so these are two dishes that are part of our plan on a page um and are um really important with our delivery to students, but also making sure that we're taking care of staff and developing staff. So I don't know if you have any questions, uh, you can go ahead and ask those now.
I don't have any questions, but it looks great.
Yeah.
I like, I like the direction you're taking and you're doing it differently, which, you know, I think what the staff wanted too. So we appreciate you guys putting all this together and making it work, so.
The only thing I would add, that as, as we were building this report, um, I really started to realize, you know, I think we knew it, but never said aloud maybe, is how much we relied on the lead teachers this year and the amount of new things we're asking them to do. So if you see them, let them know they're doing a great job. And also our instructional coaches that we've been able to add back in this year have been instrumental in making all of this, this work, so.
Do you guys do any um like survey feedback on your?
We do, so we, we send out like, uh, kind of just a survey has like, usually three questions. It's like, like, what went well, what didn't go well, what do you suggest? And then we also, Blanca also sends out like the official state form. And just this morning, Dr. Weisman informed me that our scores on that, which are kind of official but not really official, are higher this year. I don't know if they were significantly higher, you said like a little bit, uh, than last year, so.
Yeah, if you, um, on the, on the board agenda, under strategic plan update, there's a link to a dashboard that has some updates. And last year, our average on a four-point scale, I think is, they're on a four-point scale. For the professional development trainings was a 3.1. And this year, uh, they're up to the last round was a 3.7, 3.8, they're significantly better.
Or previous, right? Okay, got it.
The other thing we're noticing, we're also not getting negative feedback. So normally we sell a survey, and we get lots of people saying like, why weren't we involved? Why is this, we're doing too many different things, my head's always spinning. And this year, we've gotten like no feedback sometimes, and I guess that's good, right? Because people that are happy don't complain, so it's not like.
Well, so you're also involving the lead teachers quite a bit. And it's a lot harder to complain about your peers than it is the big bad administration. So the, uh, but the fact, but you're also empowering them to be a part of the professional development concepts, training, coordinate, all that. So you really have no one to blame but yourself in that scenario. Talk to your lead teacher, decide what you want, you're empowering them to get what they want. There, I would think there's a lot more satisfaction in that. And hopefully, they're getting a lot more targeted PD for what they need, so.
Me, me, Matt and Chris trying to plan PD for eight different departments just doesn't, just doesn't work real well.
It's so individualized, and I think that distributed model of coordinating PD is good. So um, the model, I think, is working, and then the content will follow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for your time.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get Matt and Peter here very often, so I do just want to also publicly thank them for their work. These guys work really hard. Classroom instruction is the most important thing that happens on a day-to-day basis to, for our core outcome around student achievement. And so really appreciate their work and their effort for that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think that's all that I've got under superintendent report, unless people have questions about any of the documents, there are a few reports in there. Questions? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Actually.
Go ahead.
Month of reports, can I?
Yes.
I have a question. So you can call it a little heightened awareness of why I might be looking at some numbers a little more carefully. But could you dig into why Oak Plain attendance percent of attendance is much higher than Almond's percent of attendance? Is there a structural issue with taking attendance? Is there a cultural issue in the building? Or could there even be something related of the sophomore to junior transition that causes a 6% drop in attendance potentially? I, not sure why I didn't catch that, it may be always this way, but if you, I don't know if there's a way to maybe take back to your administrative team or your power school person.
Yep, we'll go look at that.
I appreciate that, thank you. That was all.
Anything else? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 38 through 50, as posted. And Exhibit B, athletics, activities and volunteer personnel recommendations, numbers B 11 through B 13, as posted. Payment of the bills dated November 5, 2024, in the amount of $2,097,442,083. Payments of the bills dated November 19, 2024, in the amount of $5,655,983 and 92 cents. Acknowledgement and accept gifts to the district regular meeting minutes of October 15th, 2024. The serious safety hazards for the 24 or 25 school year, and the 15 junior students to graduate in May 2025.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schulz, second by Mark. Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
DeMonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Now I want your discussion items.
Um, we've got in a couple of days here, we've got Mr. Anderson going to the delegate assembly. Um, so we do need to build some consensus around what items, uh, where we want him to go. Um, I don't think we need a formal vote um, on this, uh, my, my recommendation has been uh, to follow the committee recommendations. There were a few that weren't up for a vote that went through an appeal process, um, that the committee did not recommend to adopt, but because they went for the, through the appeal process are up for a vote, and I think there's two of them that would be worthwhile looking at and considering. Uh, number seven is around cell phones, and it's asking the state legislature to consider something uh, that gives us some more teeth around cellphone use uh, with students. I think that's probably very difficult for them to do, but I think that they could figure that out. Um, and um, it is very difficult for us to continue working through that. And if there's more people at different levels trying to figure out that problem and the impact that it's having on our kids, maybe that would help, I don't know. If there's a lot of, maybe there is, I don't know what the downside of asking more people to talk about this uh, would be. And then also a resolution nine, uh, you might wanna consider it um, kind of expands background checks uh, to current employees uh, in a way that uh, some of the background check processes only apply to new hires now.
Briefly, could you tell us what we would ask the state legislature to do that we can't do now?
Um. I think what they're asking for specifically is some type of allowance for school boards to consider the prohibition of cell phones in certain situations for students. Um, and I think there's some stickiness around the access to that for students, and some legal question around how much can you regulate, regulate student access to cell, cell phones in schools? Um, many schools are doing it uh, to some degree, but I think they're looking for a stronger support at the state level. For school boards to set policy around that.
I'm the state legislature, I'm saying you're passing the buck. For what?
You're, you're asking to consider to do vote in favor of those two. In my experience last year, I think it's part of my frustration was that they put all of these on a consent agenda, and it was a you had to pull it off, which I did in one case, uh, to call a vote. So, not to disappoint you, but um, it became very evident that they packed it all into one large consent agenda to do not recommend, so. Unless you're willing to take it off the consent agenda, you have to ask them for that, if I remember this correctly.
Yeah, it's procedurally rough.
Yes, and I had no voice, I remember.
They gotta vote to decide if they wanna take the vote.
That's correct.
Then if you approve the fact they're gonna take the vote.
Yep.
Then you take the vote.
Got it.
And then take the vote to take it off, then they take it off, then there's discussion, and then you gotta vote on the discussion, so it's three votes and a big.
Guys, I learned a long time ago, if you're gonna lose, don't spend the capital, but your call.
And I agree with your recommendations totally, and we've discussed the whole background check thing, and I feel very strongly that there's already a system in place in Illinois that they could partner with, but I won't reiterate that argument, so.
Thoughts on it, John, you're the one who's gonna be going through this process.
First, you gotta decide if, um, you gotta make sure you're on consensus with the ones that the committee recommended to adopt. That's the easy one, there's a handful at the beginning that were clear and have been there for a couple of months now.
I don't have a problem with any of them that they want to adopt, and I don't have a problem keeping any of these really, to be honest with you, because. I don't have, I mean, I don't have anything in me, I looked at it, said, well, that's dumb, I wouldn't do that no matter what, I don't, I don't have any of that thought about any of these, so. I think they should let them all go through personally, but. Are you guys all in favor of the ones that they said do adopt?
Yes.
We're all good with that. But now we just have these three.
Two.
Two.
Two, but there's three of them, so we're not okay with one. And we're okay with the other two, or are we okay with all three? Not gonna make it anyway, I guarantee it.
I don't know if I would recommend that we do the office of inspector general item. Yeah.
Just clarifying. Why wouldn't you?
I am uh, worried about.
Is that the number eight?
That's number eight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Number eight.
I guess my perspective is, yeah, I mean, if we try and get them pulled out and vote on them, and even if it goes nowhere, it's still a no, somehow it still elevates the fact that some group of people still feel strongly about it, and it should get a voice and some recognition. Maybe, maybe it doesn't do anything this year, but maybe next year it does.
My assumption is the group of people that went through the appeal will do everything that they can to try to get it up for a vote, and I don't know if we necessarily need to worry about.
Yeah, they'll try to move it out. They'll move.
They'll do it. Support them.
Yeah, oh, I'm definitely not moving it out.
Sorry, John, I.
What are you, what are you saying?
I'm saying what I just said.
Oh, it was pretty clear.
Yeah.
I didn't have any, I, I read all these, I didn't have any disagreements with the committee's recommendations. Um, cell phones, the one thing it would provide a district like ours is coverage, state says you have to, that's what it gains you. But Illinois being unique in having, what is it, eight hundred fifty-two school districts, there's no, it's hard to pass anything statewide. It, to get them all to agree, whereas most states are county-based, so there's a lot fewer players, and I, I just don't know realistically if it would ever get done in the state, but I'm not opposed to pulling it out and going the other way either. And the background checks has always perplexed me, why those are not ongoing, like, people don't isolate themselves for the time of employment with us, so I, I've always, other than.
The state of Illinois supports an entire division that does it for healthcare. It, it already has.
And our staff are with children, and it's always like, other than the politic, I, so I understand it is, so how that gets and becomes a negotiated matter again over eight hundred fifty-two school districts, I can see where that would complicate things.
Well, you have hundreds of facilities in the state of Illinois, and they all still have to do the same criminal background check through the state of Illinois. Like, it's, it, it works, it's not that hard.
Yeah, and I think sometimes these things can be automated, like every teacher, for instance, who has a Ellis account, an online account, with the pertinent information could electronically be done in some kind of automated fashion, like I, I think if there was a will, there's a way to solve some of this stuff, but will is hard to come by, so I'm good with whatever you guys wanna do, but I wasn't initially opposed to any of the committee's recommendations.
State legislature certainly has a history of telling us what to do.
Well.
There you go, John.
Yep.
Yeah, I've got, I've got my direction.
Your marching orders?
I'm not the one doing it, so you go do whatever you wanna do.
Whatever you wanna do, John.
Really, truly, that's the answer.
There's, there's always next year, Tony. Is that a volunteer for next year that we should?
Oh, he's not going.
Moving on.
Susan. Susan is the newbie is in next year.
I don't know how she got a pass this year, by the way, I didn't get a pass.
I volunteered.
You did, that's right.
But we'll have.
Oh, yeah.
Moving forward, the Illinois school, school report card came out.
Um, yeah, so I included uh, this year in addition to linking to the state report card. Uh, I've traditionally done a memo that highlights some of the positives that I saw, some of the opportunities for improvement. Um, I included the full five essentials report, which is really a, a response to the climate of the school, how students and staff uh, feel about what's happening in the school. In addition, a new report that I included this year was a percentile analysis. Uh, sometimes it's hard that, the way that the state reports the data to understand how you compare to other schools. Um, specifically, we're really interested in knowing how we compare to other high schools. Uh, so there is a percentile analysis report in there that goes through um, the different categories and helps you see where we hit on the percentiles. I think a really specific area that's important to look at for the percentiles uh, is the, is the math section, so I wanna talk about the math section for a little bit. Um, I, I do think that um, we need to have conversations about our math scores. It would be probably easy if we just looked at the state report card to say math scores across the state went down, because they did, and correlate the state math trend to our decrease in math scores. Uh, the problem that we're seeing is that our percentile, so where we rank against other high schools decreased as well. So while all, generally all high schools have seen uh, a decline in math scores over the years since the pandemic, our decline has been uh, worse than other schools. We also see a decline in percentiles in uh, the English Language Arts, the math is, I think, the more pronounced. So I would encourage you to look uh, specifically at that percentile report, and I think it's page. Page three uh, is the student achievement section, and you'll see that um, the decrease in the school percentile specifically for math is uh, twenty-three points. So it's a pretty significant drop in our math scores, um, even taking into consideration that there was a statewide drop uh, in the math scores. So I think that's an area that we need to take a hard look at, we've had multiple years now of declining math uh, scores, and uh, they aren't trending, they're trending in the same direction, but not aligned with the state. The other area that I think needs a lot of attention specifically is um, in our, that I'd like to call out, is our ninth grade on track data. That is something that the school board has been, we've talked about that every year, and I do think that the organization is doing a good job about thinking how to put more resources into our freshmen as they come into the school district. And I expect that that, our overall ninth grade on track data does look better, and that it will continue to increase year over year. The, the concern that I have that I think we need to keep talking about with our ninth grade on track data is that our minority on track data is not good. Um, and so, well, specifically the, the alarm that I see and that I think uh, is something that the uh, board should consider, and maybe we continue to have future conversations about. Um, and then as a side note, I, uh, last year, we talked here at this meeting, but then we kinda took a committee of the whole and had a deeper dive and talked through some of the, did some prep work and found out what some of the um, priorities are, and so I'll talk tonight a little bit, and then uh, can try to pull out some priorities about things that you'd like to look into more tonight, and then in the upcoming months, we can talk more one-on-one. But if I look at the uh, ninth grade on track data, specifically, we had a pretty significant dip in uh, the on-track status for our black students. And uh, just spending some time looking at that, um, I think, although I think we should talk about it more and bring in some more people to talk about it um, with you and look at some of the trends. Generally, probably the conversation around this has to do with failure data, because our failure data definitely is disproportionate uh, with our minority students. Our failure rates uh, for our white students are significantly different than for our black and brown students. And so, while our interventions definitely are going to support students that are failing, um, there's still going to be um, even this year, some significant gaps, and if we look at the failure rate, and they showed you, it is slightly better uh, with the resources that are added, but there's still gonna be a significant gap uh, to, even today with the extra resources in uh, the students that are able to be successful in that class. Between the different uh, subgroups, so I think that's something really specific that uh, the board should be looking at and asking about and following up on.
Know what the demographics are of the people that are in the support classes?
We do, I, I don't right, right now, but we do know that, yes.
Okay, and though you know, we'll know if we're helping, if our programs are being participated in by our underperforming students that we're trying to target.
Yes.
These uh, big idea schools that we're already visiting, it would be interesting to hear if any of those schools have had success in the areas that were not, and then we're already sending teams of people there, people are already thinking of doing things differently. Even just asking the question of the big, I think it's big ideas, whatever the organization is, if they have any schools in their network. I don't wanna take us off task of, but if we're sending teams out anyway, a couple more questions might gain us some.
That's great, that's a great connection, yeah.
Do we know if the ninth graders coming in are further off track than they have been historically, meaning is there a bigger gap to get them on track than there has been in the past?
Are they, so are, are you asking, are they coming in?
Is their baseline lower than historically coming into here?
How do you measure that?
Are the feeder elementaries having the same conversation?
I, well, I can find that out. We do, we can find that out.
What does that look like?
Yeah, I mean, is this a new problem for us, or is it a problem systematic throughout the, all grades?
Yeah. I can find that out, um, I, I I do wanna note, I just, I wanna make sure, I think that's a really important question, I think for the ninth grade on track data, something that's important to note is that overall, our on-track data is better. The on-track data for the black students is wor- significantly worse, so we dipped, we dipped down, something happened there, maybe it is.
Did really well with some people.
With some groups, correct.
Total number percentage up.
Yep.
But our black children.
Yep, and maybe there is like a trend that we can find in the eighth grade. The, um, I would say another wrinkle to that, um, I'm just making sure I write this down, Mr. Schultz. The disproportionate failure rate in our core courses does, is a ninth through twelfth grade um, data point. So generally speaking, in all, in all of our core courses, uh, the failure rate is disproportionate.
So, we, we're saying with, you know, with, with black students, they're the ones that we, that potentially need most help. What are the demographics of the teachers or whoever's helping them out for the additional help? Do we know what the demographics of those people are?
And, and it's, it is our, it's our black and our brown students, um, so are you asking about?
Demographics of the teachers that are in.
Of the intervention courses?
Yeah.
I don't know that, I don't know that.
I mean, going back to conversation we had probably last year, that certain demographics of students learn better or go to different demographics of teachers, administrators, or deans. Maybe the intervention group should kind of follow suit too, if we could.
I imagine uh, that if, be, because we have so, there are a lot of staff members that are doing intervention courses, uh, because there are so many of them, that it probably is a mirror of our staff demographics, if anything, uh, that would be my guess, but I can find that out. Our staff demographics are not a mirror of our student population.
Yep.
Might be nitpicking, and I'm sure it is, but under school demographics, student demographics, table three. Low income statewide, forty percent, thirty-four percent for the school last year, this year, forty-two percent statewide, nineteen percent for the school. Who are they kidding, where do they get these? Who are they kidding, where do they get these, where do they get this data? That, that's not-
I think we've had discussions of, we know there's more families out there, we're not capturing them somehow.
Significant outreach over the past couple of years.
Despite the significant outreach, um.
This is like self-reporting, people surveying.
We get, yeah.
Yeah, part of the problem that we're having is that because, or the problem, part of the problem that we ran into starting last year is, um, because we, we walked away after the pandemic from, um, the National Free Lunch Program, our students are no longer automatically enrolled into the free lunch program, and so now people have to opt in where, uh, we were able to automatically enroll them before, and we don't have those lists now, and so it's, it's harder even to reach out, so we're slowly aging out the families that we knew when they were here during the pandemic that they qualified.
There's no reason for them to qualify.
They have to want, they have to come to us and want it, and we don't know who they are as easily anymore.
I would be, I would beg, I would be interested to hear from anyone in the district that felt like they could offer insight or ideas or thoughts about what to do about the, the downward trend for our black kids in the, um, statistics, I mean, I, I, I don't pretend to have solutions, I'm, I'm just happy to hear from anybody that could offer any kind of wisdom as to what they thought or how they felt things should be different that we could do, I mean, I'm, I'm open to anything because I don't pretend to understand what goes on on a daily basis in a freshman classroom, but I'm damn well willing to put the resources towards anything that would work, so. It saddens me that we have a district that, you know, does so much good stuff, and yet I feel like we're not serving some of our kids as well as we should be, so.
Think that's the, that is the trick, is understanding what is causing it, and I'm a hundred percent sure it's a moving target.
Yeah.
Depending on the group of students that you have, and so you, if you're not constantly, and I think we are, we're constantly trying, I'm not saying we're not, but I think that's just a-
We're getting, we're getting COVID babies every year, right, like, this has just been a, it's been, there's, you know, how do you tease out all of the variables, I don't know, but.
And I, I do think that's true, that we will be getting COVID kids for a good number of years. I also think as an organization, I'm hoping the percentile report helps us recognize that the, we also need to move beyond just the COVID
Yeah.
conversation, because everybody's got COVID kids every year.
I mean, uh, focus groups on these, I mean, we know who these kids are, right, like, what do we need to do, do we need to talk to them, do we need to talk with them, do we need to hear from them, do we need to talk to the parent? Like, I am willing to do anything to try to get to the root cause of what they need, if there is anything that, that we can do to help, so.
With your percent, your percentile chart, I get concerned anywhere, anywhere where less than what the state value is. And my rationale for that is similar comments I've made other times where we passed a referendum, our physical buildings are in pretty good shape, we have high-quality teachers, money's not our issue at the moment. We're limited by our imagination. We should be above the state average, there's a lot of schools in the state that are dealing with challenges that despite the fact that we deal with some, nowhere near what these other schools are dealing with. Some can't even get licensed, like, the vast majority of the state can't even get teachers licensed in the area that they teach, because they're just in rural locations, there's a teacher shortage. Here, we're on the burbs of Chicago where all-
Sources are plentiful.
I, that, that's the part that I'm struggling with, so like, the math is a, is a good example of that, where we're just barely above the state average. I, I have no clue why. Uh, there's got to be pieces in here about either we're misaligned, what we teach is not matching what's being assessed, which could be true, or we're not using research to tell us what's the best way to uh, enhance what we're already doing, or we're not trying innovative teaching methods. A fresh approach to teaching math, vertical spaces, you know, has been around now for a few years, covering your classroom in whiteboards and letting the kids have at it, and good old-fashioned take away the Chromebooks and let them start working out math problems with a teacher that stands somewhat in the middle and walks around and has conversations, like, are we dabbling in these things? That I hear about in other places, though, that's the kind of stuff that comes to mind. So I don't have any specific feedback here, it's just, yeah, it concerns me where we're equal with the state or lower than the state, that doesn't feel right to me. My senses are heightened. I know there's good work being done, I always feel like, uh, part of our job is to push you and your administration to, you know, continue to solve these things, so I, I think we all take that very seriously. That's part of our role, I know there's great things happening, so please don't mistake that nudge, that push, um, for continual improvement as an indictment on how, and all the good things that have happened as well. I feel like I need to state that, because it may not always come across, and I apologize for that, but.
I've got a list of things I think people are looking for some more information around. If there are no, no other kind of wonders right now, I can continue to take some of those wonders uh, for the next month or two, and then, uh, I'll come back and make sure that we've got a good, some good data for you for a continued conversation as, at committee of the whole, and we'll bring in some experts to uh, help answer some of these questions and have that conversation.
That'd be great. Anything else on the school report card?
Not unless people have questions on specific areas.
Now, let's move forward to the action items. First action item is an approval for some more minivans.
Depends to me.
I love seeing those in the community. There's one in my neighborhood every morning, I love it.
So there are some get, significant, uh, savings to the district operating minivans versus buses. Um, the district went out to bid for, uh, five minivans. We got two bids, um, and the administration is asking the board to approve Ziegler Toyota of Racine as the apparent low bidder at a base bid of forty thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars per minivan and a total bid of two hundred and two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Questions?
I know one of those minivan drivers, and I'd love to tell him that I voted for this, thank you.
There's no other questions, I move to approve the Toyota Sienna minivan bid and award, award Ziegler Toyota Racine as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up is some information on some project grant applications.
So every year, the district applies for the state ma- maintenance grant. Um, the project identified this year is the O'Plane Roofwork Phase Three. The estimated cost of the roof, roof work is three million two hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. We're hoping that will be less. We are asking the board to approve the opportunity for the district to be considered for the fifty-five thousand dollars in matching funds.
Questions? If not, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-five, round one, school maintenance project grant application as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up is a resolution estimated, estimating the levy for the fiscal year twenty-four.
Um, so just the timeline for the, um, levy adoption is tonight is the, um, estimated aggregate tax levy. Uh, December seventeenth at the board meeting, um, the board will, um, be asked to approve the twenty-twenty-four tax levy, and then the filing with the county will be, um, between the seventeenth and before the thirty-first, which is the final, uh, fi- filing deadline. So after a successful passage of the referendum, the district is in a much better financial position. Um, through fiscal planning, we should be able to maintain our fund balance. We need to be cognizant of our aging infrastructure and the associated costs. This year, after two years of very high CPI, um, we are, we are working with a lower CPI of three point four percent. And new property is always a variable, um, some years it's way up, some years it's way down. But we try to work with what the county gives us as far as projected. In the board, um, documents, you did receive, um, the amounts for each one of the funds. Our total ask, um, to the county is, um, four point nine eight percent, um, increase. We won't get that, but that's what we're asking for. So the, um, total annual, uh, estimated annual increase to a homeowner of a four hundred thousand dollar home will be an increase of approximately one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And then the last, um, portion that was in, uh, the PowerPoint, um, in your board documents was a new law where a calculation needs to be done, so um, it is publicly disclosed as far as what our fund balance to our expenses are, and, um, after calculations, um, the fund balance to expense is fifty-seven point five percent. That amount, um, will go down as we spend money for the locker room. That's it, if anyone has questions?
Out of one.
There's no questions, I move to approve the resolution estimating aggregate levy for the year twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez? Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next up is a discipline improvement plan for the school year.
So we, uh, this is presented to the school board every year. Uh, the state, um, identifies school districts, the twenty percent of the school districts in the state that have, the, the highest twenty percent of disproportionality, uh, in exclusionary discipline between white and minority students. Um, so we've been on that list for a, a good number of years. Um, in the last handful of years, we've reduced the reasons why students are excluded. There's really very few reasons why students are excluded, it's primarily, uh, for, uh, violent, um, situations or drug uh, situations. But we do, because, uh, we still have disproportionate exclusion situations, uh, have to submit this report every year. Uh, we provide for them, uh, generally, we let them know what are some big picture things happening. Maybe some big picture training around diversity or inclusion that are, that's happening, maybe some committees that are meeting uh, at the district level, uh, to work on some diversity initiatives. And then we also, uh, explain to them, uh, what we're doing at the classroom level or the intervention level to provide supports to students, uh, and then we provide to the school board, uh, every year for acknowledgement and approval before we submit to the state. Happy to answer any questions, if people have any questions.
Questions, I move to approve the Illinois State Board of Education Discipline Improvement Plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone, if there's nothing else.
I have something else.
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
It has to do with the, uh, convention coming up here.
Mm-hmm.
Who is going to be there Thursday?
Thursday night.
By seven, like dinner hour? One?
By the grace of God.
By the gr- yeah.
One, two, two?
Hopefully.
One. One person.
One.
One, two, three, four.
I'll be there one.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, got it, that's all I needed, thank you.
Buying?
Is that what I'm hearing?
Bringing cookies, bringing cookies for everybody. Anything else?
Shots on the bar.
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Danny's against that.
Just kidding.
Roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson? Mrs. Pope?
Please.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone, have a great night, have a great week, enjoy the trip downtown.